Can anybody hear me, Dave Gaskin?
Yes, we can hear you, Dave.
Okay, because I, can you see me or not?
Yes.
You can, okay.
Okay, so the public is admitted, Chairman Olds, if you would like to call the meeting to order.
Okay, I do call a, call a planning commission meeting of September 24th, 2020, order. First order of business. List the commissioners, please respond. Fickiny.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ficken.
Who? I couldn't hear you, Fred.
I called your name, Dave.
Hear.
Did you hear me?
No, I didn't. Yeah, I think it was just, just muted a little bit. Yes, I can hear you now.
All right, Commissioner Goodwin.
Present.
Mayor Lindsey.
Present.
Commissioner Sam Pierre.
Present.
Mayor Dinner.
I'm here.
We are, we are present and ready to go. I think the first order of business is to review the minutes. You received them in your package. This was the planning commission meeting of August 12th. Assuming that everybody has, has read the minutes, are there any comments?
I have a comment, Chairman Olds.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to note that I understand, because I've taken minutes for meetings before, and I know that it is sometimes a very laborious chore. But it's a three-page document, and we had a five-hour-long meeting. So just moving forward, if there's any way that we could have, you know, some more of the important details, either of the public comments or conversation moving forward, I think that would be beneficial, just for the record, for people that do want to go back and look at the minutes. That's my only, my only comment. And I do know that the meetings are now recorded, so people can go back and look. But again, if we could try and, if it's some, if it's a meeting as long as the one that we had last time, if we could try and elaborate a little more, I think it would be appreciated. That's my only comment. Thank you, Chairman Olds.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Would somebody like to move the acceptance of the minutes?
So move. Gaskin.
Support. Goodwin.
Okay, let me call a roll. Fickiny.
Yeah.
Gaskin.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Sam Pierre.
Yes.
Dinner.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The minutes have been accepted. The next order of business. The next order of business will be a public hearing for the Department of Public Works Facility. Mr. Seisland, would you introduce the speakers?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Olds. First, I have the public comments, two written public comments, one that was received late. And then after I read those public comments, I'm going to ask Ms. Smith to see if there's anybody in the queue that would like to comment on the Public Works Facility. So with that said, I'm going to read the first public comment from Mr. Frank Joyce of Lake Point. "I noticed that the attractive new municipal building on Mack Avenue in Gross Point City does not have a wall around it. I'm also aware that Gross Point City does not have physical barriers at any of its streets that border Mack Avenue. Can someone on the planning commission explain why the park wants to add yet another barrier facing our Detroit neighbors by including a brick wall around the proposed new DPW building?" Next public comments from Mr. Greg Donnelly. And I do not have an address on here. "Dear Planning Commission, I want to express my deep concerns over the planned DPW building on Mack Avenue between Wayburn and Maryland. There are at least five significant reasons that the current plan should not be accepted as presented in today's meeting. It doesn't meet the city of GPP's master plan, which would need to be amended to allow for such a building. The master plan is in the process of being amended now, so why rush this through? The Mack Avenue Improvement Plan, which was led by our neighbors at Eastside Community Network in Paulerson, 2018, does not support such a use or how the proposed building addresses the street. The proposed building does absolutely nothing positive for the pedestrian experience of Mack Avenue, and this development eliminates a perfectly good building that could provide a great pedestrian experience. This development involves tearing down a house on Wayburn, at least the fifth time the city of GPP has torn down a home for parking in this dense residential part of the city since I moved here seven years ago. Why are we tearing down perfectly good homes for parking? This development will make worse the unwelcoming street closure of Wayburn at Mack by putting up a wall that Wayburn will deaden, end into. Why are we still putting up walls that are border of Detroit in 2020? Thank you." Chairman Olds, those are the written public comments. I'm now going to ask Ms. Smith if there's any public comments via phone now. Leah.
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. Yes, I do have one person in the queue for public comment. Just as a reminder, if you are a member of the public and you would like to make a comment, please press star nine to raise your hand, or use the raise hand function in the Zoom application. So Mary, I see you are first. I'm going to share the three-minute timer. And then I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and state your full name and city of residency for the record. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Leah. My name is Mary Rulo. I live on Lake Point in Gross Point Park. In my opinion, the notice that was sent out in the surrounding neighborhoods, or I should say streets, is wholly inadequate for five reasons. This is especially true, given that tonight is billed as a public hearing. The city says it is, quote, "encouraging residents to attend the planning commission meeting and to bring your questions and concerns during public comment." But number one, the notice references a Zoom meeting, but does not give a link or include the meeting code or password. Number two, the notice does not explain the types or rules for public comment, including that it can be submitted in writing in advance. Number three, the notice does not include a link to the materials and does not indicate that such materials, for example, include drawings. It just says that information will be available on the city website. Well, where? Number four, the notice does not reference a construction schedule and how the streets will be impacted. Number five, the notice does not include any explanation of rights that residents may have or how to contact the planning commission directly. You know, to be fair, until recently, notice to affected residents really wasn't a thing for city leadership or administration unless it was required by state law. And then just the bare legal minimum. I suggest the city start asking its residents with community engagement experience, I being one of them, for, for help, or hire someone if that's what it takes to do this right. That said, I think with this lack of notice, proper notice going out to my neighbors and myself, tonight I would ask that the planning commission treat this as a true public hearing, listen to the applicant, and hear from the public, but then actually decide at your next meeting. I also note that we're in the last week of September, basically. A couple of the members on here are, terms are due to expire. I think it would do well for this project, and indeed the process in the city, to have some fresh eyes on this DPW building. And it really is frustrating to me, I guess is the best word, to keep on this schedule, this accelerated schedule for all things that really have a vortex point with the Art Center, especially again, when I think that there are people in this community who should be on this planning commission that have good backgrounds and will bring much to the table. But my main gripe tonight is that this notice that was sent by the city is wholly inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, next public comment.
Bianca, you are next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, please. And then state your full name and city of residency for the record. Go ahead, please.
Sure, so my name is Bianca Garcia. I formerly lived in Gross Point Park on Balfour Street, but I actually currently live in the city of Detroit. I just wanted to share the fact that I completely agree with the sentiments that were sent and, that were typed and that, that were read. I don't believe that it's very constructive or very progressive to be building yet another physical border that blocks off the city of Detroit. We are living in a time, right now especially, when it's obvious that we need to be tearing the current physical barriers down that already exist right now. And it's just taking so many steps back to be building another physical border there, as well as demolishing a house for parking. And I just don't find the design to be very thoughtful when it comes to the community in the surrounding areas. We want Mack to be a walkable pedestrian area with businesses, and I think having a Department of Public Works with big trucks and all of that right on the border, but then having businesses after it is just not very inviting. As residents of Gross Point Park, we can move freely between Gross Point and Detroit, but there's so many barriers to entry for our neighbors in Detroit to do the vice versa. So I just think, you know, that it's just, it's not very thoughtful, the plan that's going out right now, and it's also not very well-known. You know, everyone had to do digging on the city website to find the plans, and not everybody has time to do that. So I think not only should this process have been more accessible, but it's just, the current plan is just not going to work for the direction that our community is headed in. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, next public comment.
Um, City Manager Seisland, at this time, I have no other public in the queue to make comments.
Chairman Olds, that's all the public comment we have. Chairman Olds, I think you may be muted. Chairman Olds, can you try again? We can't hear you. We still couldn't hear you, Chairman Olds. Leah, potentially, is he muted?
Um, City Manager Seisland, he is muted, but I can't unmute him. He's muted himself. I've pressed ask to unmute, but it doesn't seem to be working. There's, unfortunately, there's nothing I can do on my end.
I'll try to phone him.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
Okay, I think that a call came in on my line and automatically muted me. I don't know exactly why, but I'm glad that I'm back. The, the next, the next item on our agenda is the site plan review. City Manager Seisland, could you continue with the presentation on the site plan?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman Olds. So Chairman Olds and Planning Commission, as part of your packets today, we do have a site, conceptual site plan from Stuckey Vitale, the architect, which I do have on the call here today, John Vitale and James McNeilus that were part of that team. I also have gentlemen from Stonefield Engineering that worked in development with them. As well, I do have Patrick Thomas, our Public Works Supervisor, on the call, and Ron Supel, our Building Official, on the call. As part of your packet, you received a site plan. As well, you received a letter that I requested from City Attorney Howlett regarding zoning, being that it's a municipal building. And also do have plan review from OHM Advisors reviewing the site and considerations. As part of this process, the city council voted in December of 2019 to accept the move or in consideration to Mack Avenue. In June, we went ahead with the amended development plan, and that, and they're approved of the DPW site. In June, we ended up having a public service meeting discussing the conceptual site plan. And as residents have stated, we did reach out to the community, letting them know of the Public Works Building, including those business owners, and the city directly reached out to those residents that are directly abutting the site plan. So with that said, what I'm going to do, because we have a couple people I'd like to introduce, I'd really like to get Patrick Thomas to speak about his experience with the current building and the future building on Mack Avenue. Pat, take it away, please.
Hello, everyone. Pat Thomas, Public Works Supervisor. Just want to let everyone know that the building that we're in right now, definitely we have some limitations there, especially when we're looking at functionality in those areas. The good thing about this new building that we can see right now, that I went through there with Tom Jenny, myself, to take a look at it, and I was also, had some information from Stuckey Vitale, which was very helpful. Again, the DPW building that we are in right now, we are not capable of really getting a lot of things done through there, just for the fact of how, how much we're stuffed in there, pretty much, as far as where the vehicles are and everything else. The drawing that they have here really looks good. I can see that a lot of the areas, we have a lot of movement, everything else, will be able to at least move around and such in a building of that sort, along with different offices, meeting rooms and such. There's a lot of good things to say about this building.
Thank you, Pat. And I do want to note as well, as part of this process, that Pat Thomas, Tom Jenny, and our Pump Station Manager worked with OHM Advisors, actually, to go out to different public works sites in the mid-Michigan area and metro Detroit, to look at, you know, future needs and current uses that could be used for the new DPW site. So that was helpful. That took place in December, February, and June. And so with that said, what I'm going to do next is ask City Attorney Howlett to speak regarding his opinion letter that I requested. Mr. Howlett.
Thanks, City Manager Seisland. I think the letter speaks for itself, and it's pretty straightforward. This is an issue that had come up before, I think prior to the city council meeting that dealt with this. And the, the long and short of it is that the city is not obligated, as odd as it might sound, to follow its own zoning, and there's a logic behind that. Cities typically own a limited amount of property, and the law does not constrain them with, with the zoning regulations from being able to build in those areas. The letter cites the, the relevant case law, and I think explains it. I don't want to take up too much of the time. You know, I can answer any questions from the commission if they have any. But that is, the long and short of it is that the zoning is not an issue that would preclude the construction and development of this project.
Thank you, City Attorney Howlett. So next, what I'll do is discuss a little bit of the OHM Advisors' findings. They had a background regarding meeting with the city in regards to the Public Works Building, in terms of looking at a public facility use in its executive summary, realizing that exemption. They did also, you know, wanted to note that the city would, should work with those residential neighbors regarding programming, effective screenage setbacks, and considerations of light, noise, and those uses as well. Landscaping, I did previously mention that. And in it, it did define that it currently does not meet the current master plan, however, due to the, the, how old the master plan is, and certainly for consideration. But this plan does comply with the general business designation for the portion of this site. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding OHM's findings. So take it away if there is any. Seeing none, I'm going to ask Mr. Ron Supel, who's on the call, who reviewed the preliminary drawings regarding the Michigan building code. Mr. Supel? Mr. Supel, can you hear me? I can't hear you.
Anybody else hear me?
Looks like we're having some technical difficulties right now. I'll ask Mr. Supel later on the call.
So with that said. I just heard him chime in. I think maybe we can hear him now.
Oh, okay. Ron, could you please try again?
City Manager Seisland, it's Leah. So I see that Ron is muted himself, so I've asked him to unmute, but just so you know what the situation is from my end.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll try and get back to Ron soon. With that said, I'd like to introduce, well, I'll take it away to James McNeilus and or John Vitale for introductions, and then when you guys are done with that, you can ask Ms. Leah Smith to present the screen.
Great, thank you, Nick. This is James McNeilus from Stuckey Vitale Architects for the Gross Point Park. Oh.
Yeah, I was just going to introduce myself also, James. This is John Vitale with Stuckey and Vitale Architects. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city of Gross Point Park to present this project. And we've worked very hard with the city and all the people that work at the DPW to integrate state-of-the-art facility. And James is going to sort of walk through it in more detail, but again, we want to thank everyone that we worked with, and we, we think that we've come up with an exciting plan that's now state-of-the-art. So going forward, the Gross Point Park DPW is going to be a much more efficient and workable place for all its employees.
Great, go ahead, James.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you to the commission. For the Gross Point Park Municipal Garage, we're proposing a single-story, 17,565-square-foot building on Mack Avenue between Maryland and Wayburn Street, which includes office space, a maintenance garage, and mezzanine for additional storage. The building design is intended to showcase the city of Gross Point Park. The Mack Avenue facade is made up of high-quality masonry materials in a well-balanced composition that complements the existing architectural character of the area. And that allows the DPW to serve as a new entry point to the city. As a pre-engineered building, the new facility will be able to achieve an upscale look while still maintaining a cost-effective approach. We received design input, like John mentioned, from the DPW, and we've been working closely with the city manager's office throughout the planning process. We're interested in hearing any feedback from the planning commission. So here also tonight is Eric Williams and Kevin Heffernan from the Stonefield Engineering Design Firm. They are the civil engineers consulting on the project. So we're excited to present the new DPW design and to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to just add, I'm like Fickiny here, this is the nicest-looking DPW building I've ever seen, and I want to commend you for putting together such a nice-looking building. I don't know how anyone can complain about this. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
City Manager Seisland, does that conclude the presentations?
No, no, Chairman Olds. James McNeilus is actually going to share his screen with us. James, are you ready for that, so I can ask Leah?
Yes.
Okay. Leah, go ahead, Commissioner Gaskin.
I have a number of questions. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out from a procedural standpoint, when he presents the plans, should we comment on specific drawings that we see or have questions about as we go along, or wait until the end of it? What's, what, what's the preferred way of doing this?
I think it would be a good idea if we completed the presentations and then go into a round of questions from the commissioners.
Okay.
Leah, can you please give James that capability now?
Hi, James, you should be good, so if you can just try for me again like we did earlier.
Sure thing. So the package is up on the screen here. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
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 Okay, great. Let's see. So, Nick, do we want to go through each sheet one at a time here? Or are we going to?
Yes, please, James.
Proceed through the whole package? So title sheet, introducing the project, square footage and applicable codes, as well as the architecture and engineering team working on the project. This is the civil engineering site plan. Excuse me. That includes general information about the site, about the area surrounding the building, as well as any features on site. We've included a storm water management plan as well, that includes all the storm water features on site, based on existing utilities and everything that's currently in the area. The civil engineering team is, again, available to answer any questions regarding the storm water management. This is a lighting plan, showing the proposed site lighting, indicating that all the light that's going to be on site is going to be designed in such a way that it won't impact the nearby residents. And finally, a landscape plan for the civil engineering package, illustrating the screening that's going to be around the site, as well as any landscape improvements to the site that are proposed as part of this project. For the architectural floor plan, we are showing the maintenance garage space alongside the office space on the west end side of the building, as well as the door locations and the proposed interior layout of the building. This is a mezzanine plan. This is a single-story building with a mezzanine area above the office space for additional storage. With accompanying elevations. And proposed renderings to show an idea and give an understanding of the look and appearance of the building from the street view. And finally, a proposed rendering from the residential area looking towards the DPW site, illustrating the proposed screening around the, around the property. And that concludes the drawings. Leah, would we like to?
I do just want to, sorry, James, to interrupt. This is the city manager again, just to, for the public and everyone to understand, the home you see in double zero is a city-owned property that will be demolished, and I, and the Verdunque Building, which is the corner of Maryland and Mack Avenue, is also part of the project that'll have to be demoed. I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Leah, do we want to continue sharing the screen for comments, or are we? Or are we concluded with the presentation?
Let's please share, let's keep the screen, James. And then, I'm gonna ask the Commission if they have any questions or concerns. And, James, I think that'll be for you, I, and/or the engineer, or Pat Thomas, if there's any questions on the site. So, Commissioner, I mean, Chairman Olds?
I have some comments and some questions on the site, and we will go through each member of the Commission for comments or questions. I'd like to start out by saying that I think that the Mack elevation is very attractive. I'm a little worried about the other three elevations in that I feel it has an industrial character to it rather than an attractive character. The side of Mack and Maryland, I think if we could extend, if we could include the type of door that we have on the Mack Avenue side, I think it would be attractive. I believe that on the altar side, if you will, or the Wayburn side, if we could continue the same type of construction that we have in the front to the back, I think it would be attractive. It appears to me that the back part of the building and the sides are aluminum panel side, correct me if I'm wrong, but some type of sheet steel or sheet aluminum. And I think that we would be better served if there was a brick component of that, similar to what you have on the front. My concern is that the face that we give to residents in Maryland and residents on Wayburn is a decidedly industrial face as opposed to the same type of face that we present on Mack Avenue. I note that when the city redid the police and fire building attached to our City Hall, they were very careful to architecturally make it combine with the City Hall all the way around. I think that, actually, the building across Maryland from our new city, our DPW building, continued their facade from the front all the way around. The bank that's down on the corner, our new bank, our new neighbor, has a continuous design element that goes all the way around. I took a trip down Mack today, and I looked at the City of Gross Point and the new administrative building that they have on Mack, and I noticed their design element was a very friendly design all the way around that building. And I hope that we have the ability to improve the look of the building. The functionality, I understand, and I think it's terrific. But I think the look, as it faces our neighbors, in fact, as it faces our residents, is a little too severe. That's my comment. The next, let's go down the line and see if there are any comments. Commissioner Finkney, you commented earlier. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I agree with you on some of the things you just said. What's the difference, just a ballpark figure, cost-wise, to go around the whole building in brick or some sort of limestone, whatever you have in the front here? I imagine substantially more. Might be less expensive or just as well to plant some tall trees on the other side of that wall back there, so people wouldn't see the building at all.
If I'm Commissioner or City Manager Seisland, do you want me to go ahead and respond to some of these comments as we go through? Is that appropriate?
Yes, Mr. Vitale.
Okay, so, Commissioner Finkney, you're absolutely right. We can work closely with the city on how to soften that elevation on the backside. Right now, we are using an insulated metal foam panel on the backside of that building. And a lot of it is, it's very functional, long-lasting, and cost-effective. So, we're balancing right now. Our charge is to build a building and meet a budget. So, it's always a sort of a balancing act to try to achieve a satisfactory budget and a building that's attractive. And so, that's kind of what we're doing right now. So, we can look at alternative materials on the backside, or, as you suggested, alternative screening methods to improve the screening back there. And it might be more cost-effective to do, just as you suggested. And we can look at those. We can look at it both ways and still try to achieve and stay within budget.
Commissioner Gaskin?
Yes, I have several questions that I'd like to go through on the different drawings. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Olds' statements. If particularly on the Maryland side, I think you could soften that look so that the door leading out on the Maryland is similar to the doors on the front of the building. And I would agree, if you can soften the rear of the building as well, that would be good. So, that's what I'll say about the topic we were just talking about. But I'd like to go through a couple of the other drawings, just to understand what's what. Drawing C6, which has to do with the storm water management, do you foresee any problems with storm water runoff in that design? I don't know anything about storm water runoff. I can't really interpret that drawing, but I just want to make sure that we're okay on that and the neighbors are okay. Am I correct on that?
So, Commissioner Gaskin, I guess I don't know if you want to read through all comments first or if you'd like to kind of go one by one here?
I'd say go one by one.
Okay. So, I'll just quickly introduce myself. Eric Williams with Stonefield Engineering and Design. Obviously, like everybody said, we've been working closely with Stucky Vitale Architects. And so, what we have designed here is, it meets all of Wayne County's standards. So, it does, A, detain the water, and then will meter the release into the sewer. And then, B, it also provides pretreatment through a mechanical water quality unit. So, those two items combined will meet all Wayne County's standards. And we don't foresee any negative impact on the existing system. I know that in addition to these measures that were implemented, there is a oil and grease separator as a part of the mechanical plumbing plants. And so, that should further reduce any impact that this building may have or, you know, in our case, won't have on the existing sewer system.
Okay, thank you very much. Drawing C8, the lighting plan. I'm just curious, all of the little numbers that are on the, I would guess what I'd call a concrete, are those light loss numbers of some sort? Or what's the meaning of the little, the small numbers there?
So, usually those are foot candle reading. And that's generally what lighting designs are based upon. So, I think, you know, the site is lit up to a point where, you know, we also hang a lot of Bank of America security lighting. And I would venture to say that we lit the site in a way that we could meet a Bank of America security lighting requirement. But then, at the same time, we're very cognizant of the adjacent residential properties. And all of these lights are LED, fully cut-off fixtures that will also have house-side shielding, you know, on, let's just say, you know, if a light fixture backs up to the house directly south of the salt storage, we would have a shield on that to ensure that there's no light trespass under the adjacent property. I think if you kind of go around the perimeter of the property and look at the values we're seeing, I think we're generally between zero and one-half foot candle, which, you know, zero is obviously no light trespass, and one-half foot candle is extremely minimal.
Okay, thank you. Drawing C9, landscape. I have a question. The height of the brick wall that's shown, is that six feet?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you think that's enough to screen the building, given what's said? I know you mentioned earlier that you could make it higher, if that's appropriate. I don't know whether eight feet would be better, but it might be. I just don't know.
Well, we kind of felt, you know, four feet wasn't enough because it's not screening. And that's kind of a judgment call. We can make it eight feet, but we felt six feet, most visual lines are about five feet. When you're standing on grade, an average human's eyesight is about five feet. So, we felt that six feet would be more visually, you know, provide screening and provide good sound protection to the neighborhood and not be overwhelming in terms of a real block wall. So, we're trying to balance, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, a wall that provides adequate screening and adequate sound protection without making it, you know, overwhelming. So, that was our judgment call, like six feet.
Okay, I just was curious about that. I'm sorry, somebody else wanted to say something?
To combine the wall there, we do intend to, you know, plant a nice hedge of arbor vitae. And those will be planted right around seven feet in height, and obviously, they'll mature. And I think, you know, I think there's a nice rendering SD 1.3, James, that kind of gives you a feel for what that view would be from Wayburn.
Right. Can you go back to that same drawing, C9, please? Okay, a couple of other questions. At the end of the brick wall that has the arbor vitae on the Wayburn side, as you go up the lot line of the old Wayburn to Mack, what is there? Is that a cyclone fence? Or is that fencing along there to the Mack sidewalk or what? Do you see where I'm talking about? On the left side of the rendering, and I'm looking at the brick wall in the back, the screening wall, and then there's a fence or something that runs from the screening wall up to the Mack sidewalk. What is that?
I think the initial return of the wall will go, I believe, I don't have the exact dimension, but it looks to be about 20 feet up that property line. And I think at some point, we will transition to the, I don't know that it's necessarily wrought iron material you see along Mack, but it would make that transition from a wall to the fencing you see along Mack.
I guess I'm not clear, or maybe I'm not making myself clear. From the arbor vitae at Wayburn, on the corner of the old Wayburn, up to Mack, there's some kind of a fence or wall or something. We don't know what that is, is that right, or what?
The first 15 feet or so, when it turns north towards Mack, you'll have a little bit of a brick wall return. And then, it transitions to a wrought iron fence, I think, similarly to what we would see along the frontage, like actually at Mack. So, the fencing along the west property line would be the same fencing that we see, correct?
So, maybe just to make it clear, along that line that you're referring to, right now, about half of it is a wall and the other half is fencing, approximately.
A wall, another six-foot wall?
Yes, correct. Yeah, about half of it is a six-foot wall that continues around the corner going north towards Mack. And then, the rest of it reverts back to this wrought iron-style fencing.
Okay. Staying with that same C9 drawing now, if we could go back. Okay, the house, I'm looking at Maryland, and there's a house behind the building that's only partially shown, but I've driven through there. And that house will remain, you see which one I'm talking about on Maryland?
Yes.
Okay, and it's got a garage behind it. That garage uses the alleyway, I'll call it, that's directly behind the new building as a driveway. Is that alleyway going to be paved or what's gonna happen with that?
I think, depending on the condition, and this is something that we'll get into as we, you know, continue through the engineering process. Depending on the condition of it now, we'll work with the city to determine if it should be repaved. And so, it will remain in use, though. Now, whether it's repaved or not, that's an item to be determined.
Okay.
But they will still have full use of their garage, if that's your concern. We don't intend to block any access.
Yeah, okay. And I, my own view on that homeowner's situation is the buildings he has now are really dilapidated. I mean, with the view, you know, the old Verdunx Building and so forth. And this will be probably a better-looking situation from his standpoint than what he has now. I don't know what his attitude is towards the new project, but I would, that's just my own opinion, I guess. If we could go to drawing A2 dot 1.1, which is the mezzanine plan. Okay. You've got a stairway going up to the mezzanine that's got probably 20 steps to it. I mean, did you consider an elevator or something to lift the materials that are gonna be taken up there? Somebody's got all that stuff up, it just struck me as...
So, what we're anticipating right now is a removable railing so that a lift could be, a portable lift or a hoist could lift materials up there. And that's kind of how we've discussed it right now because the amount of materials that are up on that mezzanine are long-term storage. So, we could always put a lift next to it if that's something that we want to do, that's something we can continue to talk about. But what we've kind of provided for now is a removable area so that a forklift could lift materials and products up there. So, they could lift a part of that railing out and then easily lift materials up from the floor level onto the mezzanine. Mezzanine's not that high up, it's about less than 12 feet. So, it can accommodate that kind of lift.
Okay, I was just concerned about, you know, somebody hauling meters and stuff up continually, you know, whatever.
It's a good point. It's a very valid point.
Okay. If you could go to drawing A3 dot 1. I think you've got a typo on it. The exterior elevations shown are off on the right side of the drawing by 100 feet. You're showing us like 129 and 4 feet, 4 inches. I think on all of those elevations, it should be 100 feet less. I think it's just a typo.
I think, yeah, sometimes we use 100 as a starting point.
Okay.
And that's what was done in this case, based on an elevation that we got somewhere. But you're right, you really take the 100 off, and that gives you the height of the building.
Yeah, I mean, looking at it, I assumed that, but I, you know.
You're correct.
What do I know, I'm just a poor liar.
So, the building is not 129 feet tall?
Yeah, I didn't, I had a feeling it wasn't. And, you know, as I said before, I like the front facade. I think it's really good-looking. The Maryland facade, I think, which is the upper-left one here, that I think you could bring around to the front kind of style and change the door a bit so it's less industrial-looking. Just, and I think, I think that's it. I think it's generally a very good, a very good design. You know, we had some of the publ- You know, we had some of the public comments earlier, you know, that this is kind of rushing through or some such thing. This has been going on, as I understand it, since the site was approved and so forth back in, you know, over a year ago, in June or some such thing. The Tifa, as I understand it, is going to own it and lease it to the city, as I understand it. It will benefit the entire city and the Tifa district and certainly will be a huge improvement over the existing DPW yard, if you want to call it that, at Jefferson and Wayburn. So I'm very much in favor of it and recommend it to the Tifa. That's all I have.
Commissioner Goodwin.
Good evening. I'll start off my comments by stating that I agree with Commissioners Gaskin and Olds and Pickney as it relates to exploring, bringing the facade treatment around to, at least to the east and the west facades of the building as proposed. One of the, that's one of the things that I particularly enjoy looking at with the new public safety facility in the city. Had a question about, and I don't know if this question is more for the gentleman from DPW and/or the architect, but I was curious to know what the assumptions were as it relates to how vehicular traffic moves in and around this building. Just from the virtue of the fact that we have three main vehicular entrances off of MAC Avenue, but we also have some entrances that take the vehicles back into the rear lot. MAC Avenue does have its peak and off-peak travel, traffic periods. And so I wanted to ask if somebody could speak to that particular aspect.
I can speak to it somewhat, if I may. So we've got doors on MAC Avenue, three doors, and we also have some doors on the rear. So the idea is that it provides maximum flexibility on the usage of the building. They have an option because of all the various vehicles that would be worked on here. We have an option to back in, drive through, not drive through. So the mechanic that works on the different vehicles that the city has has a lot of flexibility on what and when and how we can move vehicles in and out of that building. And that's why we have doors sort of on both sides. It gives you the ability to drive through, go to a wash area, back into repair bay, drive out the side of the building. So really we've built in maximum flexibility. And all these doors aren't always used at the same time, but a lot of it has to do with the size and the length of time that that vehicle is going to be in the building under repair or being loaded or whatever.
Were there any considerations made around mitigating noise as well in the design of the building and the site?
So, you know, the building is fully insulated. So we've now, of course, you know, it meets all today's current energy standards in terms of insulation, and that also provides good sound attenuation as well. So along with the energy savings, we get the added benefit of sound attenuation as well.
Okay, and there was some earlier discussion around the height of the wall, which I believe you all said it would be at maximum height at six feet. Was there an exploration, at least from the consideration of sound transmission, to look at areas particularly around rehab residences where, you know, maybe a higher wall might be more appropriate or something to deaden sound?
You know, we did look at that a little bit in terms of, we felt the six foot was probably an adequate wall, but what we've done in addition to the six foot wall, as you notice, we've also provided the arborvitae screen. And so the arborvitae themselves are year-round evergreen. So once they're fully matured, these provide also a good sound filter. So we like to not just have the wall, but the actual arborvitae are going to probably get taller than the wall, and I think that's going to provide additional sound filtering that we're looking for.
Do you have an idea of, I know it's early yet, but an idea of how tall those arborvitae's will be at installation?
Well, I'm not sure, I don't remember what specified right now, but generally we like six foot tall, right?
Yeah, John, they're specified at 6'8" right now. So they'll start eight inches above, you know, the top of that wall, assuming it's at, you know, it's at six feet now.
So they're going to start at over six feet already. So, you know, in a year, they'll actually outpace the height of the wall within a year.
Okay, thank you. Because we're dealing with zero setbacks, at least along MAC and along Maryland Street, the edge treatment doesn't leave a lot of room for any kind of landscaping, as I understand it from the plans. I am a little confused because I think it's sheet A3.1, it does indicate that there are some low shrubs that are being proposed along the MAC Avenue facade, is that where the building kind of turns back in to allow for landscaping? Is that the idea?
We think we have a little space there to plant some small plants.
Okay. Wondered if, you know, because, you know, the pedestrian realm is important along MAC Avenue, it's kind of hard to see these drawings, but I wondered if there was some, an opportunity for some additional architectural detailing at the pedestrian scale of this building? Or perhaps you could talk a little bit about what kind of detailing is anticipated at the pedestrian scale for this property?
And this rendering kind of gives you an idea. We've tried to use, you know, brick, stone, and various colors of brick is a combination. And also, if you notice, the fenestration that we've used, we've broken the fenestration down even though the size of the building is, you know, the height that it is, we've kind of broken it down through the use of mullions to break the scale down. So I think the element of the water table lowers that building, you know, the use of stone sills and stone water table that carries through. That's how we feel we've broken the scale down quite a bit. And even the large front doors that we show on the street, you notice that we're not just using a typical overhead door, we're giving it a much more upscale-looking door. Again, these are all elements that we feel breaks that scale down that you're referring to. So we feel pretty good about this style of elevation that we've come up with that does not look like, you know, an industrial-type DPW building. This looks much more grander and upscale. I mean, you really can't tell the use of that building basically by its exterior appearance. So, and that, I think we've achieved what we're trying to do with that because of all the design elements that we've included in this facade.
Okay, wanted to talk a little bit about the, have you talked a little bit about the lighting, the building lighting and whether or not, for example, the pedestrian scale was taken into consideration given the height of, the proposed height of the lighting as it currently is illustrated?
So, I don't know what drawing might be best to show some of the lights. If you notice, and it probably best on A3.1, we're introducing a series of sconces. And those sconces will throw light not only up but also down along the face of the brick wall. So I think it's going to be an attractive element in terms of how to light that facade of that building. But in addition to that, at the crown, where the, if you notice where it says Grove Point Park on that, on the north elevation, we are hoping to introduce some lights in that snoffet area that would wash down and create sort of a lit crown on that higher portion of the base of that building. So these couple of lighting elements, I think, will make it a very attractive nighttime feature.
And so the, thank you for that. So the lighting only exists where you have the main colonnades, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so they're not really on the wings?
They're not, they're not really on the wings right now. We, I mean, if that's something we want to talk about, that we're open to, you know, to talking about that, to extend it if we want, if we think that's important.
Okay. I think that does it for me, I was just also curious. I think I saw that the roof drain system ties into the stormwater mitigation system that you're proposing, so I'm good there.
That's correct.
And there's no real program for anything happening on the roof other than just shelter and draining the water, right?
In reference to drainage?
Yes.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, we're tying the roof runoff into the system.
Okay, thank you very much, those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindsey. Commissioner Lindsey.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Thank you Chairman Olds, I do have a couple of questions and I'd like to echo the sentiments of Chairman Olds and Commissioner Gaskin talking about the aesthetics of the facade. If there's a way that we could continue that facade around Maryland and Wayburn in particular, and honestly, if there's a way to do it around the whole building because we do want that viewpoint from MAC Avenue to be consistent all the way around, I think that would be really beneficial. I know we've been in our current DPW building for a long time and hopefully this new, this new building will, you know, be part of our city for decades to come. So this is our chance to get it, get it right the first time. I would also like to go back to the comments that Commissioner Gaskin had regarding the mezzanine. I think it's important to have a lift in there. I know just my background, you know, I've got uncles that are mechanics, my father-in-law is a master electrician, my husband's worked in the trades. So I feel like I've been around handyman my whole life. And my particular recent experience has been over at the East Side Hockey Rink up on MAC behind McDonald's, and I know we've got mezzanine storage up there. And even just carrying what we need to do up and down those stairs, I can't imagine trying to get tires over the side. So if there's a way to incorporate a lift, I think that would be great. And I did want to ask, I know looking at the plans, we've got mechanical bays that I'm assuming are lifts for the truck in those first two bays. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to extend that mezzanine or provide some additional storage perhaps on the other side of the building? Just kind of thinking ahead for the future, maximizing every inch of space. So I don't know, Mr. Vitale, if you think?
You know, we have looked at that, it's a good comment. And we can look at that, and actually there is the possibility of adding some mezzanine storage on the other end of the building. The code, there is a code restriction on how much mezzanine we could put in the building, but we do have room for a little bit more because the code allows for about 30% of the building to have mezzanine. So we probably could do a little bit more, we can look at that. And so we, again, we're balancing, you know, we've got a budget that we're trying to balance, so that's a little bit of our challenge. But what we could do is perhaps price that and see, you know, because we actually did some early schemes that exactly showed what you're speaking to, had a separate mezzanine on that side as well as on the side over the office. The over the office makes a lot of sense because we don't need that full height ceiling in there and we're already building walls, so it was easy for us to put a mezzanine over the office area. So it was most cost-effective, let's put it that way. But we could also look at additional mezzanine. We have the, the code does allow us a little bit more. So we could look at that and price that and make that a consideration.
I think, I think that would be great. I know, just in talking with Pat this week, and, you know, I've actually been to our current DPW building and, you know, as much space and storage as we can get, I think will benefit us in the long run. So I really appreciate that. My other question was about, not so much the accessibility for our own trucks inside, but when Pat and the guys are getting deliveries, whether it's a delivery of salt or stone, is there enough of a turning radius? Again, I'm looking at C3 and I know that there is a, there's a gate into the alley that would exit out on Maryland. And I didn't know if, does that provide enough of a turnaround for a dump truck to come through, drop off salt or stone at those storage bins and then continue driving through? Or would they have to back in on MAC and then pull out, was my question?
So Eric, do you want to talk, speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the way we envision it is that they would actually enter off of Maryland and be able to pull through the alley headed west. And with the, you know, the storage area being as large as it is, they're able to, you know, maneuver and do what they need to in there and then actually pull through and out onto MAC. I know that was one very specific request that was made was to make sure that we're not backing out onto any of the roadways. So we were able to make it work. I think, you know, we were happy to provide the diagram and just, you know, just to reaffirm that that was the case. I know that James had connected us with the folks that do deliver the salt and so we had pretty specific standards to what they need and are looking for and were able to work through with them and make sure that all the needs were satisfied.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. And, you know, that kind of goes into what Commissioner Goodwin was talking about with mitigating any, you know, noise for the neighbors if there were trucks backing in or creating traffic issues along MAC and Maryland. So that's fantastic. So my last set of comments are, you know, again, they're my nerd comments. So I wanted to know if we have, you know, I know we don't have detailed electrical in here, but is there either the opportunity to build in or provide for future use of plug-in stations? Just thinking ahead, five, 10 years, you know, we may have electric trucks of all shapes and sizes and having plug-in stations readily available either inside the building or outside the building, I think would be great to think about now. And I don't know if we have generators planned for the facility. You know, I think everyone that lives in the Grove Point knows that we're all kind of held captive by DTE and are sometimes not so efficient electrical grid. And, you know, this would be a facility if they lose power, we want to make sure that the guys can continue their work, that the garage can be locked. You know, everything can be secure, the lights can remain on, so backup generators. And again, that might be on an electrical schematic that we don't have. So if you guys could talk to that a little bit?
Some of the items that you're speaking to are actually, will be Some of the, the items that you're speaking to are actually, will be part of the construction document phase, which we're, will, will be the next, next phase that we'll work on. So these are great, great suggestions and we'll, we'll definitely look at incorporating those into the construction documents.
Okay. Awesome. I think that's it. And, you know, thank you everyone for your, for your time and your work on this. I did drive by the, the site to kind of get it wrapped around my head. And I know it's a, it's a pretty compact site for what we're trying to do, you know, with the limited land availability in Gross Point. So I appreciate you guys being able to help maximize this space as much as we can to make it most efficient for, for Pat and his team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sam Pierre.
Hi. I, I again will echo what our previous commissioner said about the facade materials, especially on, you know, not on Mac, the ones that are on both on the Maryland and Wayburn side and then, you know, around the back if possible. I feel like there needs to be a bit of softening overall from the look and feel of the building that can benefit not just Gross Point Park, but also Detroit and people in general that are entering Gross Point Detroit corridor on Mac as they're driving down there. You know, I, I think we can find a material that maybe isn't necessarily the brick exactly, but isn't those panels. That could be a good happy medium. And just again, make it look slightly less industrial on, on the sides. Even though the building's intent is an industrial one, I don't want to necessarily have that feel on the exterior and the interior of course, but on the exterior. Kind of along those same lines, I think in a lot about the future of this corridor as Mac continues to develop, as we continue to get a stronger relationship with the city of Detroit and hopeful that this becomes a very pedestrian friendly area. And when I look at this building from the Mac side on the north elevation, it doesn't feel very welcoming if I were to walk past it. And so I really want to think about not just landscaping, but, you know, lighting, material use. What is the opacity of the glass? It's hard to tell from the elevations if you intend that people can be able to see in to the building or see any of the action. Or is this just glass for looks? And if you can, you know, explain a little more on your intent there.
Yeah, I know. I think the glass is going to be real glass. For example, on the lower part of that elevation where we see those people walking. Those are looking into offices. So we, that'll be clear glass that people will actually be sitting there working. There, it's an office environment in that part of the building. So we would welcome natural light into the building. So the glass, for the most part, you know, there'll be some spandrel areas where there's structure. But for the most part, we're hoping that there'll be glass that will enter natural light into the building. So I think it'll feel like, like, like a office front type building. You know, I think it'll have that, that kind of feeling. We're not trying to make it a solid spandrel, you know, you know, panel that, that you'll not see through.
Right. It was, it was a bit hard to tell on the rendering.
Yeah.
The intent was on that glass. So I just, I just wanted to make sure. And then, you know, also think about when people aren't in that office, right? And so when we have evenings and weekends, and I understand there'll be city workers doing things, but the building may not be as activated and what is that look and feel? So it may be beneficial just from your studying, especially as you're getting into CDs, to look at some of those evening views and think about what we can do to make this building still, still feel alive at night. Not just for people driving by, but again pedestrians. So if we continue to see development in and around this area, both on the Gross Point side and on the Detroit side, we don't want this like, well, could feel kind of a hulking, intimidating building at night.
Sure. I think we'll, we'll take a look at, based on your comment and an earlier comment, maybe we'll, we'll look at some different types of lighting that might really, you know, give the, a more, a different pedestrian, you know, feel on those wings. So we, we can, there, there are some really nice fixtures that I think we can incorporate that might enhance that, that feel that you referred to.
Absolutely. I think if something can be done, not a huge cost, will make a big difference. We all know that that lighting can do that. And again, same into the landscape, right? And just thinking about our selection of plantings and what continues to make this feel less like a city building and more like, you know, strolling down a nice pedestrian area regardless of what's happening inside the building. It's like this outside is, is our shell. How can we make this feel as welcoming as possible? Do, do the business that we need to on the inside. And then another kind of question comment that I love to hear more about, a bit on along the lines of thinking of, you know, electric vehicles and things like that. Overall, what is the sustainability plan, both in the design and the construction, you know, on this building? Are you aiming for any kind of LEED certifications? Is there anything that we can look at that can get us towards that? Because we're doing a, you know, public works building, it would be great to have those considerations in our plan overall.
You know, our approach has been on this building is, we, we haven't talked about getting any certification, but in all our projects, we, we really strive for every easy aspect of being as energy or as energy efficient as we can. So we look at the mechanical system, we look at the type of insulation we have. And the, and the current codes have, have been elevated such that, you know, we have to provide a pretty energy efficient building today.
Absolutely.
So I, I think that we can look at things like, you know, where we get materials from and all those other things. So we'd like to, you know, I'm going to call, call it like grabbing the low hanging fruit in terms of anything that we can do that makes sense towards certification without maybe getting. So we're, we're very conscious of that in all our designs and, and we'll, we'll do that with this building as well.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think that almost all new construction with not a lot of difficulty can achieve LEED silver and without any extra costs. Like you said, it's a points game sometimes. And so I'd love to see what this looks like on the certification because if it's a matter of one small lever to pull here and there, to be able to say that our new public works building is also LEED certification, doesn't obviously have to be platinum, I think would, would really benefit the city overall and, you know, set a precedent for other developments moving forward.
We can look at that. I think that's a good, a good comment. And I think it's worthwhile to, to look at the differences and at least understand what, what other boxes we need to check to get there. Yeah.
Absolutely. I think that covers, just double check that I got all my comments here.
Thank you.
That covers everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dinner, do you have any comments?
I have a couple. I, first I'd like to thank all the commissioners for what I thought was a very thoughtful discussion and questions and comments and also our architectural team for the quality of their responses and so on. So I think we're in really good, good hands and in good shape going forward. I did have some questions that were already answered, like on the stormwater system and the, the lighting plan that had been covered. But I also would like to agree that particularly on the sides that are on Maryland and toward, on the Wayburn side, softening that look and continuing as much of the facade treatment as is practical would be good. And, and agree with the idea, particularly on the Maryland side, of upgrading the doors to look more like what's on the Mac side, but scaled to a smaller scale since we're only talking about small vehicles. So that's just a comment. The other, the other comment I had is kind of a question that didn't come out in the, in the description, but I think it's, it could be a question for the city or for the architect. The rendering shows that the streetscape, we talked a lot about what's going on from the pedestrian feel in the front. The streetscape in the front is, I understand it and what I can get from the renderings, is to continue the same look and feel, including the decorative lampposts and, and tree plantings as the streetscape that continues down through the, the other blocks on Mac all the way through to Somerset. And I just want to confirm that.
That is correct. I believe there was one or two light holes that may have needed to either be relocated or removed, but we're going to continue, you know, to the, to the greatest extent possible to maintain that streetscape and continue it where, where applicable.
Okay. Thank you. Other than that, the rest of the discussion has been so comprehensive. All the rest of my questions have been covered very well. So thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to just poll the commission again. Does anyone else have a question or comment that they'd like to add?
I have one. Finkin' it here. I'm wondering, Nick, the mezzanine level and accessibility, would it be possible to put a roll-up type door at that level that from the outside of the building, the forklift could pick up pallets and get them in through there? Rather than have to remove railings adorning two extensive on the interior of the building to get to the mezzanine level with larger objects?
Well, we, we certainly could do that. Right now, it's, it's more common to feed it from the interior as, from a safety standpoint, I'd rather not have a roll-up door on the second floor. So that's something we can talk to the DPW about if there's, there's a way they want to work. I would still have a railing there, you know, even if we, if we had a roll-up door, you know what I mean? It's kind of a safety issue to just have a door at the second level without some sort of protection there. So.
Thank you. That answers that. But on the exterior, is that limestone or dry, what is that material on the upper portion, the light material on the front elevation of the building?
You're talking about the, on the front elevation?
Yeah, above like the arched windows.
So.
Above the brick. Is it limestone or what is that?
So we're, we're calling out kind of a variety. We have a combination of some, like a, a stone panel. There's a faux stone panel and we do have some ephes on the crown. So it's sort of a combination.
Okay. Would that look nice maybe on the upper levels of the second portion going up around the rest of the building?
Well, that's, that's kind of what, we'll, we'll come up with some ideas on, on extending this facade along the sides that we're just talking about. So we might step it down or some, I have some different thoughts on how we'll continue that, to improve that facade, to carry it all the way through. Because the roof does slope down as we go towards the south. So I, I think we'll have some ideas of incorporating exactly what you just mentioned. You know, we do want that crown or something. That's the way of making it look good and improving that. So that's probably a device we'll use.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay.
That's it. Me.
Could I ask a couple of questions, please?
Sure.
Just, just in general, what is your timeframe in terms of construction? Do you have any idea yet as, as to when this might commence?
Well, I mean, given your approval, we could finish the construction documents, bring out a construction manager. You know, I think the timeliness of building through the winter is something we can talk about. If we want to start constructions during the winter time or wait till early spring, that's sometimes something to discuss depending on if there's, you know, how severe the winter is, is it worthwhile? Things like the demolition, underground, things like that could start right away. And then with, it does take time to order the steel and so on. So I mean, it could be an early spring project that erection could start.
Okay. Second question, just in general, construction costs in this day and age, are they accelerating, going up? Are you finding? Or are they fairly steady? Or, I mean, my, my experiences, they generally go up the longer you, you know, things go on. But it could be different now. I don't know.
No, you're absolutely right. We're seeing construction costs and materials are escalating. And I think the pandemic has accelerated that. I mean, generally things are always going up, but labor rates have increased as well as material. So yes, in general, my, my answer would be that construction cost is rising.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Good project.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to recommend the approval of the site plan. But I would like to charge the city manager with taking into consideration all of the comments that have been made by the commission and to the extent possible, acting on those comments.
I would support that motion.
Now, are there, are there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'd like to call a question. Commissioner Finkin.
Muted. Mayor. Yes.
Yes.
I'm all for this proposal and I like what I see.
Commissioner Gaskin.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey.
Yes.
Commissioner Sam Pierre.
Yes.
I am a yes. Oh.
Skip the mayor. I'm a yes.
Coming back to the mayor. Mayor Dinner.
Yes.
The, the, the motion is passed. The site plan has been approved. The next item of business, City Manager Seisland. Now, before we go to public comment, where's new and old business? On that, do any commission members have new or old business to bring up at this point? Hearing none, I'd like to move into the public comment section of the agenda. City Manager Seisland, would you handle the public comment, please?
City manager, we can't hear you.
Leah. Did you alert Nick Forrest?
Yes, I'm here. It's because he, he dropped off the call and I didn't unmute his phone number. So give me one second.
Okay.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, that was embarrassing. Sorry about that.
Well, I had the same problem earlier, so.
Okay. Leah, could you please see if there's any public comment in the queue for non-agenda items?
I'm thinking, Manager Seisland, yes, I currently have two people in the queue for comments. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen for a three-minute timer.
Excuse me. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, but you're going to need to wait. Okay, so Mary, you are first in the queue. If you will, please state your name again and your city of residency again and go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Leah. Mary, Rulo, Gross Point Park. Just a quick comment. And I, I think I'm going to raise it with the council as well. And then it strikes me, I spoke in public comment before the presentation tonight, mostly about the notice. But I had some questions and comments I would have liked to have made after the presentation. So it kind of strikes me that in our, our new order here, where we're having public comment about specific agenda items with which I totally agree, that we really should be letting the public make those comments after the presentation. Because just looking at the package that was on, posted online doesn't give you the full context. So that's a request I'm making, I guess, going forward, Mr. Chairman, that when there's public comment about the agenda item, that it follows the actual presentation by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, next public. Thank you. Leah, next public comment?
Brian, you are next. I'm going to ask you to please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Go ahead, please.
I'm Brian Bosberg, resident of Gross Point Park. And it was just, my only public comment is a question as to what the status is of the master plan RFP or RFQ. I know that that was something that the city council referred to. Planning Commission, I was just expecting to see it on the agenda since that happened several weeks ago. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Leah, is there any further public comment?
And City Manager Sizlin, I have no further public comment at this time in the queue.
I have a public comment and my ability to raise my hand was disabled.
Okay.
This is Greg Donnelly. I live on Lake.
Can't hear you.
That's because the host muted me again. This is Greg Donnelly. I live on Lake Point. And my public comment, I guess, is in the form of a question as well. I'd like to know why, in the form of a hearing, public comments that were made both in writing and in people speaking during the allotted time were not in any way responded to by the planning commission. They seem to have just been left out there hanging. And I would hope for better interaction with residents who have pretty major questions about a development like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, do we have any further public comment?
Same, Andrew Sizlin. I have no further public comment at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Olds. That's all we have for public comment.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So you're just going to ignore the public that asked questions?
That's inappropriate. Can we please maintain the decorum of the meeting?
I'm sorry, I missed the city attorney's comment.
My only comment was it's, it's inappropriate to interrupt, I'm sorry, and the public comment period is over. That was my only comment. So I would just recommend that we proceed with the, the meeting.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion. In fact, I move the, the adjournment of the meeting if there's a second.
Second, that, Fickiny.
Okay, let's, I want to take the, the role for the adjournment. Commissioner Fickiny?
Yes, adjourned.
Commissioner Gaskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sam Pierre?
Yes.
Mayor Dinner?
Yes.
And Chairman Olds is a yes. We stand adjourned.